All right, excellent. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the regular meeting of Kimberley City Council for Monday, November the 10th, to order, held here on the homelands of the Tonawha peoples. Just before we get going, I want to kind of just say a couple of words, but remember and say tomorrow, I think everybody knows we've got ceremony down at Veterans Park at 10:30. Organized the game this year by military aims. We've done a pretty awesome job. You know, in an organization of our Remembrance Day ceremony. I had the opportunity to go up to Selkirk today. Selkirk High School held its Remembrance Day services and wow. They ever do an awesome job. A lot of generations have passed since the big wars. We've got a lot of conflicts on right now. And the kids are definitely keeping up with what's happening, you know, around this, which was awesome to see. Congrats to Principal Dolc, Dolc Paul, Lindsey Rice and the rest of the group that organized that up there too. All right, so do we have any late items?
There are no late items.
All right, hearing done. Can I move her to adopt the agenda? Council Maguire, thank you. And Councilor McCain seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on October the 27th. Mover please. Counselor McCain, seconder, Council Maguire, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. All right, first up tonight, we have on tap for a second reading, the aligning of official community plan and zoning bylaws to the housing needs, the housing needs report. It's for a second reading of amending bylaws. Council McCain moves. I'm a seconder. Counselor Karen seconds. All right, discussion. Maguire, Justin, you want to just kind of give us a brief summary?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so we are here for your second reading of the amending bylaws. At this point, no amendments have been proposed through the process to date. We did take some feedback from the last meeting and it been referred to that into the text of the report that was brought forward this evening. Primarily just highlighting the importance of showing the province the actions that the city is taking to address the issues highlighted in the housing needs report and according to the legislative direction from the province. And that that's sort of what this whole process is aimed towards. Yeah, I think the other piece there that because of scheduling issues with getting notice out for public hearing, we are proposing that the public hearing occur on December the 10th, that the regular council day. Oh, December 8th, sorry.
No problem. The Monday night.
Yes, the Monday night. Exactly.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you for that, Justin. Counsel, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Counsel Maguire.
Yeah, there's a lot of changes in here to kind of prove through. And I don't know if I have full grasp on all of them yet, but I, for example, I didn't even know we had a C2 zone. I don't know if there's actually any parcels in town that are zone C2, but we apparently have a zone for it. And we're apparently amending it tonight. So one of the things that came up when I was going over it though is the changes to the short-term rental and C1, which is kind of the zone surrounding the downtown core, as well as the downtown commercial zone in Marysville. And yeah, we're essentially removing the option for short-term rental as an accessory use. And I see where the logic is as far as trying to limit the development of purpose-built short-term rental when we're in a housing crisis. And I also have mixed feelings about it around driving business to our downtown core. So I know that short-term rentals are a way of providing accommodations. And if we focus those all at the ski hill, it really is a missed opportunity for some of our downtown businesses. So I don't know how other counselors feel about that, but I'd be open to an amendment around that. And then the other question I had was just around the group homes in all zones. I'm just curious from planning department, is this something that we've seen in other communities? Is it, or is this? Yeah, I'm just trying to, I know that, you know, this isn't the biggest issue that we're facing right now. And at the same time, I'm just curious whether there's precedence for this.
Yes, thank you. Through the mayor. Yes, in reviewing the proposed policy amendments, there are quite a few communities that do have group home as a generally listed and allowable use. I think that there is a bit of novelty to this approach where there is a broadening of that definition and so allowing a broader scope of uses beyond what might traditionally be considered a group home into that. So I think there is a little bit of novelty there, but a lot of it is practiced up.
Further? Yeah, I just, I would be curious to see if any other counselors have any comments about that short-term rental. And I don't know, maybe it's something that we need to look at as a broader strategy. And maybe we already have because I've only been on council for a couple of years here. So maybe it's something that we've already looked into and this is part of a plan that I don't know about.
Yeah, I think the the proposal to remove, so just, just to be clear, presently in the C1 commercial zone, tourist accommodation use is a listed accessory use. So any it's only allowed where it's accessory to some other principal permitted use on a commercial property. And this, this does relate to the proposed change to remove the multifamily residential buildings as a, as a principal use in the C1 and, and only allow for kind of a mixed-use commercial residential, multi-unit residential property. The idea being there is that if we're, you know, wanting to make sure that there's some commercial component in those developments, that we also want, and that there's residential units that are part of that, that we want to make sure that those are available for residential use. Presently, there's, there's not, there's only been, I mean, one or, one or two in the past for tourist accommodation units in the C1 zone. The tourist accommodation use provision is going to stay in the parcel zone, the CP1 zone. And we do have some, some existing units within the, the parcel zone that does provide that, that option of having some short-term rental activity in the core commercial area there. Yeah, we're, we're looking at removing that from, from the zone just to, you know, help, help ensure that those units are made available for, for residential use. And of course, you know, more traditional accommodation properties, hotels, motels, hostels, those remain as a principal, principal, or as a permitted principal use in the C1 zones. I'm just trying to, you know, balance the, the needs and the opportunities there. Back to the comment about the, the need for a wider strategy. We have allowed for quite a wide range of options for short-term rental use throughout the community. It's not just around the resort, but that granted, that is for sure the, 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 you know, where most of them are and were the widest provisions. We also allow them around the campground area and, and of course in the CP1 zone, the downtown mixed-use zones and presently also the C1 zone properties. And there is other provisions for kind of bed and breakfast operations in other residential zones, but, but not the straightforward tourist accommodation use. So there, there is, you know, quite a wide range of properties and zones that allow for, for that use and, and there's, there's, have the numbers, I think, and we admin report how many, how many existing SDR units we have. And as I've stated before, there's, you know, there's much greater potential than, than what we have for those. So I would say we're not very short of the options or the, or the potential for, for that use through town, but Council Maguire makes a good point about the need to kind of, you know, in the future, have a look at that where, you know, what should we be allowing them in other areas? Or should we be pulling back their allowance in some areas? Should we be, you know, adjusting the, the use categories or the definitions around that stuff? But again, I think that's a bit of a bigger exercise that could happen in the future sometime.
Counsel McCain.
I'll try it. It seems like it's worked. Where the heck was I going? Now I get distracted myself. Damn it. Well, I guess I'd really, you know, be curious to just kind of get, see what some, some of the broader feedback is at a, at a public hearing. I appreciate that the the explanation though of trying to strike that balance. I could kind of see where you're, you were going there. I guess, or what I was going to ask is, you know, we, we, we talk a lot of times about, you know, we'll, we'll kind of wait and see and, and kind of see where the trends and stuff go. And where I was going with that is how are we going to track things? Like, how are we going to try to get some metrics for, for the future?
Yes, we, we currently have a few different mechanisms that we employ for, for tracking short-term rentals and how they are used throughout the community. First and foremost, we do have our services that we do have the monitoring and enforcement actions that are managed through. So it's a big piece of understanding where and how short-term rentals are operating. And now with conjunction with the provincial mechanisms where they are actively tracking and requiring a secondary registration through the province to ensure that operators compliant with provincial regulations. But then we also have access to provincial dashboards through that. So we understand where and how all of the registered short-term rentals are operating within the city. And then we're able to track that over time. And then on top of that with business ups and downs, being our, our primary mechanism of allowing for sure.
Further, if I may. Is there any other metrics that we can, that we can track like within that rather, other than just, you know, where they're being used and how often?
I, I think of how often would be the other piece that would come forward. So through the provincial portal, we do have some metrics on the individual use of the, the units, but we, we softened against that data. So we haven't done that. That review as of yet, but, but there are definitely a lot more triggers there.
Yeah, yeah, we can track, yeah, how many night stays there are. So and we, you know, in short, you know, we're already seeing that, you know, there, there's some units that are used, you know, very frequently or very regularly and some that are only used a few, few days, few weekends of the year, kind of the next.
So how many, how many units in the C1 zone would come under? Would come under this?
Right now, well, there's only been one, one unit to date and we understand that unit has, the property has changed hands and the, the unit's not going to be operated that way anymore, as far as we know today.
Right, okay. And the total number of kind of doors in the C1 in that downtown area roughly?
I don't even have a guess for that. I mean, there's, there's, the C1 zone is, there's a lot of individual properties in the C1 zone. It's definitely the largest commercial zone.
Yeah. In the downtown catchment.
Yeah, I, I had to hesitate to throw this. It's, it's a significant number, I would say.
Okay, further, counsel? So I've got a couple of comments. I think I read through all of the, kind of the changes, the text changes that you had added on the, kind of the rationalization on kind of why you are doing this. I appreciate, appreciate that further context. However, the comments that I made at the last meeting, I think, remain, remain relevant. Looking at the, looking at the group home situation, by allowing that in all residential areas, it really does feel like it's, it's a solution looking for a problem. The, the number of instances or the issues that we've had with respect to potential group homes not being able to find or, or being rezoning, being resistant, I, I think has been pretty much zero. And taking decisions like that out of the hands of council just doesn't feel right. There are things that delegation of authority makes sense for, but policy changes like this one that would have a significant impact on, you know, many resident, residential areas across the city. I just don't think it makes sense to delegate authority on that. And I guess my other comment is that with regard to the consideration of future sale of or development of city-owned parcels, I'd like to see an amendment to that. Simply a one-word amendment that rather than prioritize, that it consider affordable housing and social housing projects when considering future. The city doesn't really develop. It's really upon the, only on the sale of particular properties where this will come into play. And again, you know, I think council has proven in the past, we're perfectly capable of, for the number of times this comes up of getting to the right solution. We just haven't had any issues here. So I'd like to see that, that amendment on the, on the one. And I would like to see the expanded definition of group home is fine, but the inclusion as a principal use in most residential zones, I would not be, I'd like to have that removed, just not in agreement with that. Further comments, counsel? Okay, so the motion on the floor for second reading, actually, we didn't put that on the floor, did? Did we? Yeah, okay, cool. Thanks. So in order to make amendments to this, we would need to not approve what's on the floor as far as second reading is concerned. Make the amendments and then have second reading with the, with the text as amended. Go ahead, Counsel Fox.
I'm just curious, what if we don't support the amendments?
Well then, second reading is, is passed. Okay, so is everybody clear on that? To get to amendments, we need to defeat the motion on the floor and then go to an amended motion. So I will call the question then. All those in favor of second reading at this point? Please. Those opposed? That motion is carried. All right, next up, we have the council approved second, that was for a bylaw 2793. Next, we have bylaw 2794, which is the Alpine zoning bylaw. Mover please. Counsel McCain, thank you. Seconder, Counsel Maguire. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I'm opposed. That motion is carried. That council approves second reading of bylaw 2795, which is the Kimberley zoning bylaw, 1850. Mover please. Counsel Karen's moves and Counsel Maguire seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? That motion is carried. And finally, that a public hearing for bylaws 2793, 94 and 95 be scheduled at the regular meeting of December the 8th. Counsel Maguire moves and Counsel Karen seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? That, that motion is. What's that? 93, 94, 95. That motion is carried. Sorry, what was the? What did I miss? Okay, thank you. Okay. Next up, we have a couple of bylaws for adoption. The first is the 25 to 29 five-year financial plan as amended with amendment number two for consideration of adoption. Mover please. Counsel Maguire moves. Counsel Fox seconds. All those in favor? Motion is carried. The council adopt bylaw 2791, which is the text amendment to the C3 zone principal use. If I have a mover please. Counsel Maguire, thank you. Counsel Karen seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. All right, next up, under new business, we have support for partnering with the RDEK for an application to the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund for Emergency Support Service Equipment and Training Funding Program. And the motion on the floor is that council authorize the RDEK to include the city of Kimberley in the joint application being submitted. I have a mover. Counsel McCain, thank you. Counsel Karen seconds. Discussion. Chief Booth?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, we brought forward another opportunity to partner with the East Scutney Emergency Management Program. Under this program is, or the grant on this application is the Emergency Support Services and just enhancing it throughout the region. So it's about 50 volunteers that operate within from radium to Bernie to Kimberley Cranbrook area and the regional district all within that. And we're looking for about $150,000 between five different partners on the joint application to improve or enhance the grant, or sorry, the program. And then we'll have asset management, resource management done by the regional district on that end.
Awesome. Thanks, chief. Counsel, questions, comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Finally, with this particular item that should the application be successful, the regional district of East Scutney be authorized to receive and manage the funds on behalf of the city of Kimberley? Counsel McCain moves and Counsel Maguire seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, next up, we have that council receive for information, the quarterly administration update for period of July 1st to September 30th. Basically, our third quarter. Counsel McCain moves and Counsel Karen seconds. Discussion. Yep, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a ton of great information in, in this report once again. Thanks, thanks very much to staff for all the work that was put into this. There's, there's too much information to go over in any detail here. We're fairly well represented by staff in the gallery today. So if anybody out there has, has any specifics from your departments, please jump in, speak to them. I'll just run through a couple of quick here. A couple of high-profile projects, the Kamiko Gardens rejuvenation. I don't know if, if anybody's been up there lately, but it's looking great. The accessibility improvements up there, I think, are fantastic. There's a bit of work left to be done in the spring, some of the furnishing signage and plantings, but it's looking really good. Center 64 Banshell, the, the stage and landscaping is coming along as well. There's a photo in here to give council, the public, an idea of what it looks like there. There's some work left to do on this project as well. It's going to carry on into the spring. St. Mary's Ave reconstruction, it has been wrapped. Some, some great improvements to, to that project as well. There's a, a bit of a update on the wastewater treatment plant project as well. After months, years of work, we actually had shovels in the ground on that project. In October, there was some, some earthworks completed there. So it's great to see work actually happening. The, the work's going to start in earnest in the spring of 2026, which is when construction will start. And it'll be a couple of years before that project is, is done. But anybody that wants more information, I'd encourage them to log onto the city website or, or click into the admin update, which can be found on the website as well, along with all the other ones. The ICE facility strategy, there was an open house on it, along with the wastewater treatment plant, was, was really well attended. And the consultant is now working on final report. Bring back the council on that, the recommendations and the public engagement findings. Bunch of good statistics in there from the planning department on building permits, planning applications, short-term rental license activity. Community development and communications, there's a bunch of great information in there as well about grants that have been approved and applied for. Council may have seen some posts go out about the vulnerable persons database. So that's being led by, by the fire department, cabin communications is, is put some information out in order to get that registry populated by folks who, who might be in a vulnerable position, just in the event of, event of an emergency. Also, from the communications department, there's been a bunch of work on the website as well. I don't know if council or the, the general public have had a chance to click into it yet, but have a look. It's got new look and, look and feel. The accessibility advisory committee provided some feedback on the website as it pertains to accessibility improvements and navigation. And I, I think there was some good feedback received there as well. Yeah, I think, I think that's about it unless council wants to highlight anything else. Counsel McCain.
Yeah, um, just kind of picking up off of top of your address there, Jim, yeah, we, the Kamiko Gardens renovation is, is looking wonderful. And same with the Center 64. And it's just a commentary, it's, it's amazing once you start putting landscaping around things, how just visually pleasing it is. And it really kind of rounds things off in town. So that's really nice to see. I guess one thing on the Kamiko Gardens thing, and I don't want to open too much of a can of worms because I, I know there's some work that needs to be done, but the, the house that's, that's still there within the, within the grounds. Just seems to me like we should at least keep it on our radar for, you know, there's, there's just all kinds of things that, that are, you know, we have in town that, you know, maybe need a, a new space or a new refresh. And, and I know there would be, need to be some toddlers that would have to go into, to that place, but just given that the, there's some rejuvenation happening up there, it just seems like there could be some, an opportunity. And we're discussing it one day. So just something for staff to keep on their radar. It would just be, I think, pretty beneficial if we could use that space.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. We have heard from a few different groups, some ideas of what that could be used for. We do know, know there's some issues with the building itself, but probably wouldn't hurt to get a bit of a handle on what will be involved in mitigating those issues to make a usable space again. So yeah, making note of that for sure.
Yeah, excellent. Counsel Karen, go ahead.
Thanks. And I just great deal of appreciation for the level of detail. It's so nice to have a, a summary like this with you know, kind of just like on the wastewater treatment plant, just, you know, we've got two pages, lots of great pictures throughout. And then, you know, on all the different topic areas, really nice to see this community development communications piece gives people a sense of kind of what's, what's happening. And yeah, the, the website update looks great. And, and I, I know, I'm like, I really appreciate this, just having these snapshots on all, all the different topics. I know people that I, I talk with really appreciate knowing where to go on the website to just get that overview. So yeah, a lot of appreciation for them to put this together. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel. Further? Two things, the vulnerable persons. If we go back to 2018, when we were under evacuation alert for the three weeks, in the course of notification throughout the neighborhoods, we discovered there were approximately 200 people that were not on the vulnerable persons list. They had fallen through the cracks in some way, shape or form. And those 200 would not have been able to get out on their own. So they're definitely, I'm not sure what work has been done since that point. You know, to try and make sure that we've got a bit of a safety net there, but that's a, that's kind of a, kind of a critical thing. We don't like to think about evacuations, but that's what preparation is all about. One question, Troy. We're up to, for the first nine months, we're up to 74 units approved. What are things looking like for Q4?
I would say I'm not expecting any large numbers in the last quarter. I suspect we'll, I think we had one more in October, but yeah, maybe, maybe a few more in the next couple of months, but
Sounds like mostly single family.
Yeah, we may have kind of reached our, our peak here in, for this year, but see what next year holds for us.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Anything further? All the question, all those in favor of receipt? Any opposed? That motion is carried. All right, next up, we have the get closer to create, to get closer to school, school mural project. And the motion on the floor is that And the motion on the floor is that council received the Create, the Get Closer School Mural Project and Placement Report dated November the tenth from the manager of the development. Mover please. Councillor McBain, thank you. Councillor Fox seconds. Uh, discussion. Pam. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as was presented in a previous admin update. Um, in early twenty twenty five, we were approached by Heritage Canada funded Create to Get Closer Program. Uh, the project brings together students from local schools to create a joint mural to connect languages, our community and the country. In October, that group did come to town and they worked with the Franklin School in Meadowbrook and McKim Middle School to create the mural that's, uh, presented within the staff report. It is, um, it's, it's rather large. It's really beautiful, very representative of Kimberly in the community. Um, the kids are very, very excited about placement. We would like to find an appropriate location to place it. Um, in discussions with staff, um, Nick and I determined that the wall, uh, just at the end of the Saint Mary's Avenue, um, project would be a good location. Um, to kind of complete that downtown, um, design project, bring it all together and kind of create a more of a longer plasmal corridor. Um, so, yeah, we're just seeking approval on placement of that, uh, mural. It will not happen until the spring for sure. At which point we would like to bring the kids involved, that were involved in, uh, creating that mural down into, uh, or wherever that may land, um, to do kind of a reveal for the community and add some nice, bright, colorful murals, um, to the community.
Excellent, thank you, Pam. Uh, councillor Fox, then councillor McBain. And councillor McGuire.
Okay, first of all, love the idea. Love the idea of putting a thing there. Light, I love the mural. I love the concept behind the mural. Just don't love the two together. And that's not a, a criticism of, of anyone specific. And actually, a big part of it is that, um, I think that the scale is a little, like, it might be a really big piece, but when you put it there, it doesn't look like a really big piece, right? So I'm wondering if we could maybe, um, find a place where it feels a little bit more like it's going to be a bit better enjoyed, um, because I feel like we have lots of instances in town where things are, we have these pieces that come in and they get put there. And it's sort of like, well, why is this here? And I would much rather we have some pieces where they're like, oh, this is here and that's awesome. And I feel like this one runs the risk of the former just a little bit, just because it's such a substantial, um, canvas, if you will, that we're putting that on. So, yeah, that's just my, and the other thing too, if at all possible, rather than sort of making a decision on this kind of today, I think it would be a good idea to think about some policies around public art, only because I know we say there's no long-term expenses, but like, if we did put it there and like, someone got in an accident because they didn't remember that it was one way and then it got like damaged, like there would be a, a cost to doing repairs on that, right? And it would be good to, like, no, it doesn't come up that often, but it's good to, I think, have that in mind that it's, there is a possibility of that.
Councillor McBain?
Yeah, that, that, those are good comments, Diana, and I, and I agree with you. I think it would be nice if we had some, some kind of guiding light, um, when it comes to, uh, with respect to art, and I, I tend to agree with you on the proportion, like what you're, what you were talking about there. I, I don't, I don't know what the answer would be somewhere else either, but, um, if it, if it ends up being there, I, I think I'm okay with that, but that proportion, um, or that scale comment was, uh, I think you're, you're, you're on the mark there. Um, this is a completely off the somewhat off topic. The, the mural that we have that, that is on, um, Mark Creek Market, was that done privately or is that done through the cities? Does anybody know? I'm just curious, and I don't want the founders to be rolling over in their grave right now, um. Um.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Well, there, Sandra, move now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I happen to know. No, it was done by Mr. Poach and it was done for the, uh, owners of the store.
Yeah, I, it's, it's, thanks, Sandra. I think it would, uh, be cool to have a refresh of that, but if it's on, you know, it's private, that's, it is what it is. But, um, anyways, I love the idea of, of, uh, just in general of having more murals and more, more public art. Um, but, yeah, I, I kind of agree with what Diana was saying.
Um, councillor McGuire.
Yeah, similar sentiment. Just like, like seeing public art and want, want to really encourage, you know, create a culture of that within our community. And, um, yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing a couple of other spots as proposals, uh, you know, things that come to mind to me with this one is maybe closer to a kid's playground. Um, I don't know, uh, maybe on a smaller building. Uh, first thing that came to mind for me was that little building right beside the tennis courts, but I think it's too small. But, yeah, I just wouldn't mind seeing a couple of other proposals, especially if we're not in a rush to choose a location. It's not being put up until the spring anyways, by the sounds of it. Um, I just think maybe let's sit on it, maybe, um, defer until the spring and, and kind of, uh, see if anything up, calls comes up in that, in the meantime, it's a, a better option. And then if not, maybe it ends up here in the end anyways. I don't know.
Go ahead, councillor Donnerback.
Oh, love, pardon me, love the idea of the mural. Um, location, I don't think is super rad for all kinds of things that have been stated impact, snow removal. Um, also being directly affected by the sunlight there. Um, having it closer to a park, I think would be more absorbed by kids and, uh, the parents that are there. Um, and the fact that, you know, to me, it's, it, it's a bird's eye view, kind of like rotary in the creek and all of the stuff there. I think it would be uh, an awesome place for, would be on the, on the, uh, arena wall where it's protected by the sun, from the sun and from the, uh, uh, other elements, water and stuff like that. And maybe we'd have more opportunity to use that big blank canvas on the side of that arena, uh, to display stuff like this. Uh, because the arena has so much traffic and we're always talking about how we're going to face lift or do something, something, and I just, it makes sense to me.
Go ahead, councillor Jeff.
As well, jump in there too. I, um, yeah, I, I agree with everything that's been said. It would be nice to, to see this in a high pedestrian use area rather than on a roadway that doesn't really have, um, any sidewalk there and, yeah, isn't necessarily seen by the students very much. Um, and scale as well. And as has already been said, you know, having some idea of, like, if, if an inventory of, um, what are some potential locations that you can free tech notes for, and then, uh, be able to, to match.
Thanks, councillor. Uh, Pam, were other locations sought and or considered?
A few other locations were considered, um, the retaining wall as you go up to Fort Lawn Avenue Star. Um, trying to beautify some of the kind, uh, kind of, uh, not so beautiful spots. Good way to put that. But I'm absolutely happy to go back and look at other locations. You know, we can put another report together and put this on those locations and and council can decide if we present some options. I agree, a playground is probably great option, road repair potentially, most of the fencing down there, chin and fencing, I think, it, it, it will get expensive if we start to resand this thing, so it's got to go, you know, somewhere that it makes sense financially. Um, so, yeah, I'm happy to go back with next to the harvest stamp and see what we can.
Further? One last thing, uh, something that Sue said there really kind of, if, if we could have like an inventory of like available space, whether it's for murals or statues, you know, whatever the, the case may be, that would be, that's a really good idea. So, just wanted to make sure we covered that.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, just final word. Whenever public art comes up, um, you know, conversation reverts back to a policy. I just want to remind council that there is, council has provided direction on creation of a policy for art in the fossil area specifically. Um, you know, and we start talking about an inventory of places where a mural could go. I, you know, how many murals are going to come along kind of thing? I think those might be best dealt with, uh, as, as one offs, but as well, we don't want to happen is that this kind of get forgotten about off the side of somebody's desk and, um, then we're scrambling next August to find a space for it. I think what we might do, and I'll work with, with, uh, Pam on this, is come up with a way of, um, possibly calling council for some ideas as well, like we, yeah, we'd like council to come forwards with some ideas so that we're not, not missing out on anything. So we'll, we'll, uh, circle back.
Thanks for that, Jim. Yeah, our downtown area is woefully void of walls. It's just interesting, very, very cute. So, uh, okay, uh, I'm going to call the question on receipt. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried and we will defer the second motion, um, to a future meeting. Okay, we have, um, uh, we have just one item of correspondence this evening. Um, move receipt. Councillor McBain, thank you. Councillor McGuire's seconds. Um, any comments? All those in favor? Should this carried? Okay, we do have a new camera, uh, tonight, council. Um, thanks for the quick work on the, uh, regular meeting. Um, I, could I have a, uh, well, before I do that, is any councillors have anything they'd like to, uh, uh, bring forward on stuff that's happened this week? Okay, um, move to going camera. Councillor Karen's, thank you. And councillor McGuire's second. So all those in favor? That motion is carried. Thank staff. Thanks, folks, for being here.